Call this meeting to order. If everybody could stand, we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And in this call.
Hey, roll call, Zach Brown, Michael Elliott, Chris Keller, Nancy Ross, Jay Russell, and Matt Sutton. We're all here.
We will open meeting up to a public forum if anybody would like to speak.
About anything that's not on the agenda?
During that, we will close the public forum. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the previous meetings, meeting minutes?
I appreciate the details. I missed it.
Does anybody have anything that needs to be added or amended to it? Somebody like to present a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is.
Hey, so new business, I'll read the ordinance title for the record and then Brad Town Planner will has a presentation. So this is ordinance twenty twenty four dash ten, Public Hearing and Ordinance of the Town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a second amendment to the development agreement for the Oakland Commercial Center Plan Development as recorded in the Public Records of Orange County, Florida, document number twenty eighteen zero five eight four three zero one, with a first amendment to the development agreement as recorded in the Public Records of Orange County, Florida, document number two zero one nine zero zero five three six four six, to approve the Oakland Exchange Office Complex on certain real property owned by Race Track Inc. As more particularly described herein, making findings and providing for conflict severability and for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board members. And I'm Brad Corneille, this is Wade Graham, serving in the town planner. I also have Sarah Matson with me also planning. So as Ms. Elise just said, we have before you this evening ordinance twenty twenty four dash ten, which is a proposed amendment to the Oakland Commercial Center Plan Development for the Oakland Exchange Office part. A little bit of background.
Okay, we're just going to go all the way through real quick and then go back. Because it's not cooperating today. Sorry. I'm sorry.
All right. So the property is located at the southwest corner of Remington Road and Southern Railway. The applicant for this request is JW2 Development LLC, Mr. Wayne King, who is available to you this evening. And I know they have a presentation for you all as well after my presentation. The property owner is Race Track Inc. and the total area is approximately four point four acres. The existing use on this property, as you're all aware, it's currently a vacant property and it's comprised of lots five and six of the Oakland Commercial Center. And I'll get more into that in just a second. And what the request is or the intent of the request is the applicant requesting to amend the existing Oakland Commercial Center development to be able to develop lots five and six as the proposed Oakland Exchange Office. Next please. So here's the property and the overall commercial, Oakland Commercial Center. So the area that's highlighted in blue, that is the Oakland Commercial Center. And then the area that's outlined in red is the four point four acres that's part of this application this evening. So as you can see, that's the property and there's several lots that comprise the Oakland Commercial Center. You can see at the north, the, you know, the corner there is the Race Track gas station that's there. You can also see to the left of the Oakland Exchange property, that's a stormwater pond, it's part of that overall project. And also up there, Track A is also a stormwater pond as part of that project. So it's part of this overall plan development. And just to give you an idea of the context of this property, the overall project. Next please. So what's important is, as I said, this is part of the development. So in twenty eighteen, the town commission approves the Oakland Commercial Center Plan Development. And when they approved that, they approved this general layout, which is comprised of three pods, which is a neighborhood office, regional commercial, and they were retail, in a total of twenty five thousand square feet of retail and thirty thousand square feet of office. Then there was an amendment that came through in twenty nineteen, which was a minor amendment, basically just updated that site plan. But so this has an existing plan development on it that is required to be followed. And if it's not going to be followed as already adopted, then they have to go through this process. And that's why they're going through the process today. Next please. So this is a little more detail of what was approved with the existing plan development. And so the area that I've got circled there, that is lots five and six, those are the lots that are under consideration today. So what you can see is under the existing approvals on this property on lots five and six, the town has already approved a commercial development, or I'm sorry, an office development, not commercial, an office development here up to thirty thousand square feet in those four buildings with that arrangement of buildings. And why it's important for me to put this out on the record for everyone is if this developer really come to us tomorrow with a plan that matched that, we would have to go through the permitting, they wouldn't have to go through amendment. They already have approval of the town to build thirty thousand square feet on that property consistent with that plan. But they're doing something a little bit different, that's why they're coming through this process. Next please. So what are they asking changed? So what they're asking to change is, as I said, currently the approval is a maximum of thirty thousand square feet of office. They're asking to increase that to thirty seven thousand one hundred eighty four square feet, so an increase of seven thousand one hundred eighty four square feet of office space, which is not a very large increase in terms of our technical way of looking at this. They're also revising the plan and design for lots five and six, as you saw on that previous slide, it had particularly a lot arrangement for the buildings and how it'd be laid out. They have a different layout, which is now twelve, which you'll see in the next slide, is twelve smaller, single-story buildings as opposed to the four fifty-two story buildings based on that previous approval. In this case, they're proposing twelve single-story buildings on the lot. Another request of this amendment is between lots five and six in the PD and in the plat that was already platted, this area is already platted. There's a landscape easement that runs between the two because this is being developed as an overall project, lot five and six, and there will be a separate process coming forward to replat that, to bring those lots together, assuming this gets approved. There's not a need for that landscape buffer between the two lots anymore. So that's why that's being requested to be removed. Also, there's a request to remove or to reduce the sidewalk with, as required under the PD, from six feet to five feet. And the reason for that request, and I went out there again right before this meeting, just picked myself for the fourth time. The existing sidewalks that are out there are already five feet. So they would be connecting to a five-foot sidewalk and from a technical part or from an engineering standpoint, the towns engineer and Public Works Department have reviewed this and they have recommended approval of this change. It makes sense to connect a five-foot sidewalk to a five-foot sidewalk because that's what's already there. The sidewalk that's immediately to them is five feet, sidewalk across Southern Railway is five feet. So that is consistent with what's already there. And their last request change is to allow for a larger monument sign. Your code, because this property does not front on State Road fifty, it limits the maximum area of the sign to thirty-two square feet for monument sign and ground sign. They're requesting to go up to forty-two square feet for their monument sign. Now, they do meet the height requirement, which is no higher than eight feet, so that they're fine with the height. But they're asking for a larger area for the sign. Next please. Here's the concept plan that was submitted for your consideration. So as compared to what was previously approved, you know, they don't have those buildings surrounding. They have individual buildings throughout the property, there's twelve of them, different sizes. There are some there up on Southern Railway. They also are maintaining the thirty-foot buffer there on the southern property line against John's Landing. And I will tell everybody, because this is public record, the initial application, they asked to reduce that to twelve feet, thirty to twelve. We as staff did not support that. We worked with them and they put it back to thirty, which is what was approved under the existing PD. Also, just for your reference, under just a straight PD, it's required to be twenty-five feet. So that's actually even a little bit bigger than what's required. But because that's already in the PD, they're maintaining the thirty-foot landscape buffer that's back there. The other thing is part of our discussions with the developer, initially, this was forty-two thousand square feet of office space. And again, we had concern about that and part of, main part of that concern was tree protection. And they did reduce the amount of square footage to thirty-seven one eighty-four in response to that comment, and so that gets into the trees. Under the existing plan development, it's already adopted and approved and in fact, it has its own tree protection requirements within. And what it says is that if the exist, if the property has a density of existing trees that are considered specimen or historic, which basically means any tree that's not invasive, that's greater than sixteen inches in size, at a density of greater, greater than eight trees per acre, then they have to protect at least four trees per acre of specimen or historic trees. Well, I'm sure you're not surprised, but what's out there today is well over eight trees per acre. So based on the property size, they're required to maintain eighteen trees that are historic or specimen, eighteen inches per grade. They are doing that, they are meeting that requirement, they are saving eighteen trees that are shown by those green circles. I will note that some of those green circles have more than one tree in them, so the number of circles don't necessarily match up. They're also preserving some other trees that aren't that, so there's other trees that don't count against that, towards that eighteen. But they are meeting the requirement of the development agreement to protect the trees. I will also let you know, our landscape architect, who's also an arborist, has reviewed this. And he has found that their protection, and those circles actually show root protection zones, does find that they are meeting the requirements for root protection zones with the trees that they are saving. So he does believe these can be maintained as part of this project. So that was, and that was something we had quite a bit of discussion with the developer about over the last couple of months. In terms of access, the access is only off of Southern Railway with two driveways. You see, this was no access off of Remington Road for the project. The stormwater for this project is going to be integrated into the overall stormwater for the commercial, the Oakland Commercial Center project. So as if this gets approved, as they go through the actual further engineering, they have to be sure that it's able to meet those requirements for the existing stormwater that's there for this project. That is the site plan, I will point out, because I know the residents are concerned, but just so everybody sees them. Along that buffer, it's, it's outside of the thirty feet are the two dumpster pads that they're proposing. One is there and one there, so everybody's oriented to where those are located. There isn't anything in your code that says they cannot be there because they are outside of the buffer, which is what we were mostly concerned about, looking at where they're to be placed in terms of our review. So that's overview of the site plan. And I'll let the applicant go into much more detail. So in terms of infrastructure, so they're going to have to connect to town water, water and sewer. For the water, Public Works has required that they will not be able to use town potable water for irrigation. They will have to use an onsite well for irrigation, because we don't want to waste that water for irrigation. So that is actually in the development agreement, that they cannot use potable water for irrigation. And then, of course, they will be connecting to the sewer, which then that goes to Claremont to provide the treatment. And they're aware that they also need to coordinate with the city of Claremont about the treatment and be able to have that city there. So those issues are being addressed. In terms of traffic. So with the traffic, they did submit a traffic study. It was reviewed by your engineer, CPH, and the engineer did, your engineer did approve the traffic study. And what the traffic study says, and I agree with it as well, is that this has no significant impact to the traffic system. Now, an important part of me saying that is that, remember, they already have approval for thirty thousand square feet and they already went through the traffic analysis and everything back then. Now, the traffic engineer did it on the full thirty-seven thousand, so I want to also make that clear. They did it on the full product, actually, they did it on the forty-two thousand, they did it on the first number. So we're actually less, but the reality is that really the impact that they're having with this amendment is that additional seven thousand square feet as opposed to, this is a brand-new thirty-seven thousand square feet of office space. But it is a very small percentage of that total traffic on State Road fifty. And on the modeling that was done by the traffic engineer, it showed no impact to turn lanes or any need for any turn lane improvements. And that was reviewed by your engineer as well. And we already talked about stormwater, they will have to be compliant with their existing St. John's River Water Management District permit for stormwater. Next please. Building, so they are proposing building types, office building types. As I said, these are all going to be one-story buildings. There are eleven different building types, I won't go into detail, but we'll show them to you. And you're hanging down here. The, the building types. What will happen if this gets approved? This will still have to come back through the town, through our appearance review process, or the building specifically, which will be your appearance review board, back to you all, planning and zoning, and then to the town commission. But I would ask if you have concerns with what you see today, to raise it today, so the applicant knows that before they come back through that process. But those are the proposed buildings from the site, from our perspective, looking at it, we do think those are, are but always up to you all. Now, next please. So finally, just a little bit of reiteration, what this ordinance is doing is actually adopting a second amendment to the development. We have the original development agreement in twenty eighteen, we have the first amendment in twenty nineteen. And now this, if this gets approved, this would be the second amendment. What's important about this as well is everything in the original and that first amendment still stays in full force and effect unless it gets changed tonight with these requested changes. And one of those that I want to bring out, because I know it's concerning to some of these residents here this evening, is like the overall landscape plan for this product. In the plan development, master plan that was approved in twenty eighteen, it has an overall master plan for the landscape plan for these lots, which is basically perimeter buffering, landscape buffering, trees and shrubs around the perimeter of the property, in addition to the trees that they're preserving. And they will have to meet that requirement that's in the PD already. Because they are not asking for relief from that PD requirement for that landscaping. So that is an example. Another example is within the existing PD, if there's needs for extensions of utilities, whether it's water or sewer, whatever it is, it's their responsibility and our task to do that, not the town. It will not be the town's requirement to extend any utilities if it's needed to do that. And then also, they, as I said, they will be going through, if this gets approved, the replating process. And if there's any requirement for dedication of improvements like with stations and things like that, that would occur at that time. I'll just leave the plan, next please. So we did put out public notices, we posted a sign on the property on October first. I didn't notice them today, I think they probably got blown down, so we'll put them back up. We also sent mailing notices on September thirtieth to properties within two hundred feet of the perimeter of the property. And actually, today, we received two responses. I spoke with Ms. Shine earlier today, she's adjacent to lot six at nine oh nine Johns Cove Lane, and we received an email from Nicole Frederick, and Elise put that at your space this evening. And she's at one zero zero one Johns Cove, adjacent to lot five. Both of them had concerns and objections to it, and I'll just say, they pretty much match each other, what Ms. Shine told me and what you see in there. But I'm sure they'll come up and speak well. So that's the response that we have received through to me. So what happens next, if, after you all, if you all take action this evening? This is scheduled then to go to the town commission for the first public hearing on November twelfth and then December tenth for the final public hearing. After that, they would then go through the replat, which would be going through the town commission, basically combining those two lots and then getting rid of the easements that are no longer needed. Then they would also be going through that appearance review process that I spoke about. Once they got through those steps, then they're coming through final construction engineering plan approval and then bill. So there's still quite a bit of process to go through. But that's the path that they're on right now. So in terms of our recommendation, a staff working with Elise and Mike Parker and CPH, we do find this approvable and we do recommend approval of this proposed PD amendment. That's my for the presentation, be happy to answer any questions you have of me, and I know the applicant has a presentation to go.
So ARB has seen these on his building consults already?
They have not seen them yet, they will go, it'll go to them after this process.
Okay, and a minute ago, a minute ago, you said something about John's Landing, I think you mentioned Johns Cove?
Because John's Landing is across the street. I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I have a couple of questions. The first question is really just a clarification of the new committee member. So if nothing is done today, the existing approved, already approved plan includes multi-story buildings?
Potentially, yes, ma'am.
Potentially, and the maximum height of those is three-story, four-story?
It doesn't say in the PD and in your code, I believe it's three stories.
Okay, so if we do nothing, they can still go back and build three-story buildings? Okay. And?
Two thousand and eighteen, and then there was amendment in nineteen.
And then my second question is, were there any exclusions as far as type of businesses? I know in some of the recent commission meetings for the new developments, like the tubs and fifty is exclusion of smoke shops, vape shops?
Yes.
Marijuana dispensaries?
It's not, we'll change, limits us to only professional offices.
Okay.
Which includes medical.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that we didn't have any of that, okay.
Only the professional.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. So in looking at these buildings, the ones, for instance, the ones that just have one or two ways, that's meant to be just for one office?
I believe so, but the applicant can.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, feel free to speak. Thank you very much, my name is Jimmy Crawford. I'm an attorney with Crawford, again, both in Claremont, seven oh two West Montrose. And I do represent the applicant JW Square regarding this. And I had a nice little presentation that Mr. Cornelius just completely stole all my thunder on, he did it better than I could do it. So what we would like to do is hear from our neighbors and try to answer any concerns and questions that they might have, as well as what you guys might have. Unless you have something for me right at the moment.
Do we want to open it up to the public?
Excellent. Could you, that one question that I asked about the single entrances?
Those are planned for one office only if it says single entrance.
Right, do you already have a lot of interest in those spaces?
Actually do, yes. And surprisingly to me, a lot of non-medical office interest, a lot of just general office interest. But it will all be just professional or medical office. And yeah, we feel like it will go very quickly.
So pretty much normal daytime business hours, evening hour businesses, okay?
Right, yeah, there are things like dance studios and yoga, it's not allowed. So it'll be nine to five, if they're lawyers, maybe nine to six.
Okay, so no one can get like one of the larger spaces and then start to rent individual areas out, professional executive?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing that prohibits that. I don't know about our declaration of covenants and restrictions, what we're going to do with the Property Owners Association. But from the town's perspective, there's nothing in the existing PD that prevents that. And there's nothing planned to do it, but there's nothing that does prevent it. So somebody could, you know, rent out an individual office in a building the way it stands right now.
And you would not strict that?
I'm going to have to ask the owner the question and I'll be able to answer that when I come back up, it's a good one.
Well, based on what you just said, so is my understanding that you're going to sell each of these buildings to individual owners of those businesses as opposed to lease them all out as?
Yes, that is the plan, they are for sale.
Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, there will be the Property Owners Association that always control all the common area and the stormwater and all of that. Thank you, we will listen and come back.
Great. So have any questions?
No.
Okay, like to hear what you guys have to say. Please, when you come up, state your name, your address, before you start. Good evening.
I'm Nicole Frederick, I did email, but I wasn't sure how that's distributed. I'm at one zero zero one Johns Cove Lane, which is right behind how it's developed now, a garbage bin. So that's a concern of mine and my neighbors to the, if you're facing the street, left of me towards the end also have a garbage bin or two behind their homes as well. And so that's a concern, but when I wrote the email, I had indicated that I had opposed the modifications. When you look at the number of buildings, you have four buildings versus a number of buildings. And with regards to whether or not they're multi-story or not multi-story, the way they're set up formally, it's not necessarily abutting all of the property. Or it's the building, it looks like, if you look at the other site plan, Remington, there are two on the railway, I don't know how to say that, Southern Railway. And there is one on the back that is just a building. You don't, I mean, I don't see dumpsters, you know, I don't see, you know, a lot of parking spaces. The parking spaces tend to be in the center as opposed to on the perimeter that then also faces us from behind us. You can say, the way they're lining up, the parking, the parking is facing us. So if someone mistakenly, you know, pushes the gas versus the brake, you're, of course, in our backyards and you are putting our wall at risk. There are also many trees there, so I don't think that is a problem. But to have a garbage dumpster, you know, thirty feet from your house, look kind of like these do, which is where the, what would I say, it's where the Foxtail and the ice cream shop that they're on fifty. And if you go behind, they have homes. And when, you know, we take a picture of the home, this is what it looks like, garbage right behind the home. And the markings are not keeping the whole, you know, it's not in any way obstructing the fact that there are dumpsters right behind these people's homes. And the dumpsters are higher than whatever it is they have around it, so I don't know even the purpose of that. When you look at it as far as the dumpsters though, you can still see the dumpster. Unlike the racetrack or unlike the other buildings in that same area, all of those dumpsters are nicely covered. You cannot see anything, they're not open. And these particular dumpsters, there's another one, let's see. On the other end of that same property, right behind somebody's home, when they, you know, decided to move here, they weren't thinking that they'd have a dumpster that they could see right behind their homes. With regards to the extra seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four feet, that requires two hundred, every two hundred square feet requires a parking space. So if you reduce all of those square feet, then you're reducing substantially a number of parking spaces. If you reduce those parking spaces, then you can take them off the wall that abut our homes. So with regards to that, we would be asking not to put the So with regards to that, we would be asking not to put the additional units there. You cannot control what other people do, so garbage, you know, garbage right behind the homes. You can't control who's dumping. People see dumpsters and people come and dump the dumpsters. With regards to even the wildlife, we have raccoons, we have rabbits, we have opossum, we have all kinds of wildlife around there. So then you're potentially attracting more wildlife. We had had, and I don't think we have it now, we had an infestation at one point of rats. So this only helps to aid in that recurring or, you know, coming back again. With regards to the traffic, it is since the racetrack has been there. And you're already having new development down the street on Remington. Plus you have the apartments, right? You're, everybody is tunneling and everybody knows, you're coming from Lake County, everyone is tunneling at Remington Road because that is exactly getting on the turnpike. There really is no infrastructure for that. I have no idea what the study was about. You have one light. The fact that the racetrack's entry is within, what, a hundred feet of the light is ridiculous as it is. But to add, you know, the only way out is that Southern Rail Road and Remington, most people come that way. People can go the opposite way, but people won't let you in the traffic. So the other thing I oppose was have that much parking, it's lighted. You have to light park, you know, because you have risks that you have to protect from, so people don't sue you, right? So you're then have to light the parking lot. Now we have lights in the back of our homes with regards to how you would set up to protect the patrons that come. So that's also a concern because we want to enjoy the backyards and we want to freely, you know, enjoy those. In addition, I have fruit and we, you know, vegetation and plants. I don't want to run off from whatever people are dumping, you know, garbage bins and leach into the ground, you know, with regards to where we are. So as far as the traffic, as far as the the garbage dumpsters, as far as the lighting, the next thing is the sidewalks. Where public people are or people are, I don't know about the exchange between the five and the six. But when my mother and I used to walk with, before her passing, we would occasionally, before she would bend down, take the chair out and we're walking around the chair. The more space you have, when people are walking around, the better, and that is a commercial area, so it'll allow for that. The fact that we're on the trail, a lot of people use the sidewalks for, you know, the accommodations of people having to do that with wheelchairs and all of that, I had indicated that I opposed those changes as well. And I believe that was the extent. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, the signage. We're in a community, the signage is controlled. Whoever bought in the, you know, to do their commercial property, property understands and signs are controlled. We'd ask that that be still monitored, that we don't have these large signs. If someone's turning on Remington to go to railway, there is nowhere else for you to go unless you're going into the seven eleven. Then it's, I don't think it's a signage problem. I don't think anyone is going to miss their businesses because the sign isn't tall enough. And so that's my other. Thank you.
Email is part of the. Okay, thank you.
Pete Cisari, eleven eleven oh eight Johns Cove Lane. I would like some clarification, especially on the traffic impact study. We have another twenty to thirty homes being built. Now you want to add another seven back in one hundred and eighty square feet, you know, to the office buildings. So as a traffic impact study, taken in consideration, all of us. Because there are times where the left-hand turn lane will get backed up and you'll have to sit through another light. So is the light going to be timed different so that people can get it out on a left turn? The other clarification would be parking. You're adding another seventy-one hundred square feet. What about overflow parking? What happens? You're going to sell these buildings and we don't know, and you don't know who's going to bring in another office building or what type of office. It might be a high traffic, but where's the overflow parking going to go? And does it meet code at this point with the extra seven thousand square feet? And the other thing is the, you're adding the other seven thousand square feet, are the utility sized to handle that? Plus the twenty to thirty other homes being built down the street at Remington. And that would be my concern is are the utilities sized for this? That was pretty much what I had. Thank you.
Ladies, orderly, ten eleven, John Cove Lane, Oakland, Florida. The only concern I have right behind my house is where the drainage is for that community, those two lots. What's going to happen to the water runoff from those twelve buildings? Where's that water going to go? Okay, and the dumpsters are directly by my house, just like the other person told. There's four of them, two of them are directly by my house, okay? And the other concern was the traffic flow. Because if you know our community, you try to turn left any time of the day, get backs up and you almost get hit because the other lanes can't get around you. So that's going to be a nightmare. And they're building more properties right behind us on Remington Road, and that's already been approved. So to me, that's really going to be a concern. I think another lane needs to be put in there. Probably don't want to hear that, but in the road, when you turn left, it's about this wide. I mean, people hit that median all the time. And it takes the front of their car out, especially if you've got a Corvette or Ferrari or whatever you drive. It's very low and you hit it and boom, there goes the front of your car. So that's a very concern to me. And the light, instead of flashing like it does coming into this community, that might be a problem or not a problem to have it done if we have two lanes. When there's nobody coming, then that traffic can flow through there. But if it comes the other way, people don't stop. We've had a lot of wrecks there. That's my only concern, but and the lighting, like you said, and the drain off, where's that water going to go? Thank you.
For the shine and I, nine oh nine Johns Cove, I am directly behind this property. Thank you very much for letting us speak. I really do appreciate it. Appreciate all the neighbors coming too and the developer. That was good. My concern is the noise with all the cars that are going to be parked. I mean, we hear fifty all the time, we heard the turnpike. When we moved in there, it wasn't ten years, eleven years ago, it wasn't that bad. Now it's just, as we all know, it just keeps increasing. So noise is one of my issues. Because, okay, you've got twelve buildings, you also have twelve air conditioning units that are running twenty-four seven. And if these are individually owned, who knows if they're going to maintain them? So now we're going to have a squeaky air conditioning unit going on. And I just, the other question, the light spread actually answered for me. They said they were going to be downlights or nightlights or something like that where it's not going to, it's not going to have uplights, it's going to be downlights.
So the town's requirements are that all the lighting has to be dark side of the mind, which means the whole lights are oriented, driven down, cause off-site lights. So they did provide as part of their, they have a photo metric plan that shows that. But yes, the town requires them to dark side certain part of life, that could generate.
Which I appreciate, but I'm still, I've got a pool in the back and I really don't want my, my back, that's just. Okay, the dumpsters, that is definitely needs to be moved. Because right now I live right behind racetrack and at four o'clock in the morning, they come and they pick up their garbage. Yes, I put in new doors, I put in new windows and I still look at it. At four o'clock in the morning, you hear this backing up and then you hear that thing. And then you hear them dumping it, dumping it. So I think this is really a major concern. The traffic, oh yeah, I back up every one of these people on the traffic. It is horrendous. So what I want is a better buffer. I'd like to see the landscaping, really, to see what y'all are going to plan on doing for that building complex. And I'm real, and because it didn't look like there was very much green space. And I really like the sidewalks to six feet because Oakland, the town of Oakland keeps telling us in Johns Cove that we want to be, you to be a part of the town. We want you to be part of the Orange County or the Orange Bike Trail, West Orange Bike Trail. Well, if you shrink it down from five feet down to, I mean, six feet down to five feet, that's not going to be conducive to people riding their bikes and walking. I mean, all of us walk up to racetrack, then the sidewalks are narrow. So, you know, and if you want to keep us off the street, keep us, give us the six-foot wide sidewalk. I'd rather keep it at thirty thousand feet instead of the seven thousand, just because what Nicole said, because of the parking, because of the buildings and just keeping the green space. I think it's lovely that they're keeping some of the trees. I'd really like them to keep more. But I also, as a developer, understand that, that you can't save every tree. But I really would like to keep it at thirty thousand instead of going thirty seven.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Patty Houston. I live at one two zero six Johns Cove Lane. I have a question. When did they do the traffic analogy? I know you said it, but I wasn't, I wasn't paying attention.
Actually, it was updated in July.
Okay, did they take in consideration the townhomes that are being sold to the, uh, plenty, some townhomes with at least three cars?
But the way that, this is the best way I've been so far. That can put a growth rate onto the existing traffic for the build-out here for, so in this case, the growth rate of traffic is three to three and a half percent. So instead of going around and picking up all the different development that occurred, what happens is you look at the traffic and you look at the traffic and it's just valuable against, that's how they did it. The other thing I just want to say quickly about traffic is in their application of savings, and this is true. I'm not happy I say this, but the state of Florida changed the laws on how we, over government can deal with traffic back in twenty eleven. The situation we have here in the town of Oakland is state road fifty, as everybody knows and everybody said, is over capacity. Nobody disagrees. No, I don't want to disagree with everybody, even the traffic study agreement. It says that because that's the reality. But in Florida, we can't hold a developer responsible for an existing deficiency on the road. We can't make, we can't say you can't build us through all of your problem. Now, the old days, we could. We could tell the developer, but we've got a wide state road fifty now. Can't do that. We can't do that. And the other part for them though, which is also important to say is then you look at the significance of their traffic being added to the system. Because there's so much traffic out there, there are less than two percent of that total traffic. And which is all documented in this traffic study. Which means there's no improvements or anything ways the town can say they have to make or there's not a significant impact to the system.
So the in and out of this area is going to be one, one place that they're going to come in and one place they're going to go out?
Well, there's actually, there's actually two ways off of, if you beat a dumb round of the old.
Yes, that it can be used.
Well, then that would, there isn't any requirement for any turn lanes, some sudden. And then into their project, as we showed, there's two different driveway entrances on either side of the project there. So that does help to disperse the traffic. Not all the traffic, if it's going eastbound on fifty, would have to go to Remington.
And what about when, when and how they're going to build? Because the property down behind, behind us on Remington is a nightmare. I mean, it is literally a nightmare of dirt, all big machines that are tearing up the road. And that, that isn't even started. And I'm wondering how that's going to impact all the neighbors in our area and John's landing area and down Remington area.
I can't speak to timing development because I don't know.
No, but I mean, that's a concern for all areas. It's a huge concern with traffic, with residents, with children. Home and street buses, and I'm just saying it's a huge concern. Not all of the light of the trash, garbage, lighting, the animals and so forth. And I really think this needs to be, begin with big consideration when you think of the size of Oakland and how they are perceived as a small community of homeowners and people who want to walk. I have children, have homes, the value of the homes. Are we keeping Oakland small and comfortable? And are people really thinking about us or are they thinking about the mighty dollar of businesses? And we're just thinking that that's, you know, what you do is what you do. But I think that it's important to tell everybody move to Oakland, not to live in Miami and not to live in Lauderdale. So, so I think that just has to be considered.
Anybody else would like to speak?
One other thing I forgot to say, crosswalk between seven eleven. Can we put a crosswalk across there for this development? Because all our kids are going through there, back and forth, back and forth. And I had one put in with the town of Oakland, they took care of us between the two communities, John Landing and Johns Cove. They put the crosswalk across for me, our kids could go back and forth, it would get on order. So that's another concern for us to say.
Harry Ferguson, thirteen oh one Johns Cove. So, and I don't, I really don't have a question. I guess I have to propose possibly that I think we're all in agreement. We knew this was going to happen. We knew that it was stone commercial. But extending it or expanding it to more commercial is something that we all are not on the same page with. I don't think any of us want it to be any bigger than it was already approved for. So looking at this map, you know, I kind of feel like you've got the dumpsters here again, subdivision, you've got these three buildings over here that are next to the water runoff, the reservoir and you can't build them. Doesn't it make sense to get rid of those three buildings? Move all the dumpsters, additional parking for overflow, everything in these three buildings and keep the trees up along against our brick? That will block off anything that we can see, hopefully anything that we can hear. We know that it's not going to do that completely. But this seems really extensive. And I, and I think I can speak for everyone that's sitting here on the side. That is a little too much. And we get it, it's business, you want to make money. Personally, I'm not crazy about selling this property to individual companies. I think that is just going to be a huge, because you're assuming that everyone's going to follow the rules and they're going to keep the property up and they're going to do what they need to do or they're going to, you know, rent out to other reputable companies if they're allowed to rent out. And that's just not the case. I mean, most of us live in subdivisions that have HOAs. We can't even get citizens to like follow HOA rules. So you think of business, they're going to do that too. It's just probably not going to. But that would be my advice, is keep it at the thirty thousand, get rid of those three buildings, shift things around a little bit and make it more, as Patty mentioned before, a nice, small community, commercial area that Oakland can handle, that we can handle the traffic and everything else, because again, that is a huge issue. That, that would just be my idea.
Anybody else?
So, nine twelve Johns Cove Lane, so I'm across the street from Roberta. I am concerned obviously about the traffic as well. And I'm wondering, not for the developers, but for the town, what is the plan to address the issues that we're already experiencing? I mean, I've been there since before racetrack was built, so not incredibly long. But I've definitely seen a drastic increase in the amount of vehicles coming in and out of there during rush hour. It is very dangerous walking through there. I do it in the morning with my dogs. I'm having to dodge the work trucks that are coming in and out of there. I'm also getting stuck in the traffic at the light trying to turn east onto Colonial. east onto Colonial. Um, I've also nearly been hit trying to turn off of Colonial onto Remington in the afternoons because people are flying out the turnpike and so forth. So I'm curious, what is the plan? Is there a plan in a, you know, that's going to happen soon to help mitigate some of this land development that's already on the books and already been approved? The construction with the new residences that we've got coming in, I haven't seen any changes yet, so I'm hoping that maybe we can do something proactively versus reactively, because it does seem like that a lot of the street construction tends to be reactive when we're already stuck. Thank you.
Hi, Michael Carr. I live at nine fifteen, John's Cove, one. I certainly don't want to beat this horse anymore and all the things that you all are concerned about. I would just ask you all to picture yourself living where we live. And having bought a home that we dearly love, you chose to be there at my age for the rest of your life. Now you're going to have a completely different lifestyle as far as lights coming in the back of your home. You're going to have the trees removed that you just fell in love with when you bought that home. So my, my only thing that I want to say is that put yourself in our shoes. If you live where we live and you had a wall five foot tall, and that's the only thing that's between you and what used to be somewhat of a paradise, then you've got racetrack that comes in, you've got all of these homes that are being built down on, again, don't want to beat that horse you've heard enough. We just simply did not, I honestly, and now considering moving, because that's where I'm at. It's, uh, it's not the place that I want to live in. It's not the place that I want to live in anymore. Uh, and I just see so many changes coming that are still negative from my standpoint. I was in business myself. I understand that you can't change the law, you can't do certain things. But the one thing that we can do, I guess, is find another place to live. And that's sad. That we're in that situation where we actually have to commute to get the tranquility and the serenity and the lifestyle that we fell in love with when we moved to this area. I've lived here since two thousand and three.
Anybody else?
Close it for public comment and then respond.
Thank you, commission members and all the neighbors. Tried to write down as best as I could all the concerns so we can, we can talk about them. The important thing to remember is, and I don't know if we can put it back up again, but the existing concept plans labeled background. This one doesn't have as much detail as what we have shown. Um, for example, this one has no dumpster locations on it. And according to the town code, uh, has some standards for the dumpster. She can't, the buffer, she can't do that. But it doesn't tell you what to put them. So they can put these dumpsters under this plan up, up against any of the walls that they want, uh, provided they respect the buffers. There we go. These buildings are around eight thousand square foot each. From these, there are two-story commercial office buildings. The one in the north, I'm sorry, that's actually south, southwest corner is thirty feet from the property. The homes behind there, you look on the GIS aerial, I believe there's three that have pools in, in the back, back there. And this two-story building would be looking directly into the backyards of those, of those people and their pools. Our closest building to that wall is a little more than a hundred feet away. Uh, we put the parking there to buffer the people from, from the building, uh, impact. Uh, whether that be noise light or people looking down into your backyard. The, our buildings, the, our three and four thousand square feet proposed, they're residential sized buildings, and they're built with a, a somewhat residential style to try to fit in with the small nature of it. It's thirty seven thousand feet. It's not a big development. Normally, ten thousand square feet per acre is a reasonable estimate that you do when going in, which would be forty four thousand square feet. We're significantly under that. The AC units, uh, well, all of the maintenance issues that we're talking about. Uh, JW Square is an offshoot of Schmidt Construction and Development. And they have done about ten or eleven of these type of office projects, Winter Garden, Claremont, Orange County. Um, and we always do a pretty darn strict Property Owners Association declaration. Um, and because we do retain a building or two at times. And even for the people that buy, you want to make sure that the value does stay there. And the place doesn't go to pieces. The POA can step in and do exterior maintenance on any building that they feel like is needed. Once they give the owner notice and thirty days pass, we can go fix it ourselves and charge them. Uh, and once or twice we, we have done that. Let's see. The dumpster pictures that were, those are from Tucker Oaks, which is ironically behind the Schmidt office right there in Winter Garden. And, uh, those dumps, that, that landscape buffer is twelve feet. So the dumpsters are set up and they are twelve feet from the property line. Ours are thirty five? They're between thirty and thirty five, the, the closest one. Uh, and, uh, I know Mr. Schmidt is on the Tucker Oaks overall POA board. And there's never been a complaint since that, since their building has been there from the Tucker Oaks people about noise or compl, or animals or, or trash or, or anything like that. Again, the Declaration of Covenant restriction will control the, uh, use of the trash, dumpsters. Um, and I, I understand the questions completely, but we don't believe it's, it's going to be a problem. And as, as I noted, the town doesn't have any, any location requirements or, or terms in the code that, that tell you what to do that. So we just did the best we can. Um, traffic, I believe, Mr. Cornelius said it right. And if I can take just sixty seconds of going to waste everybody's time, it's actually a really interesting history of that. Florida is a leader in growth management laws in the country. Uh, many other states look, look to us to see what we're doing and how we do it. And in the nineties, we did enact statewide very black and white traffic concurrency, like we have for others. For, for, uh, water and sewer, if concurrency means there has to be capacity for that, for you to build. If you don't have sewer capacity, you can't build, period. It's just black and white. We did that for traffic. Over the next five years, it became clear that especially in urban areas, South Florida most definitely, uh, Tampa, St. Pete, Jacksonville, Orlando, what happened is the developers could not build in an area that was congested, so they just went outside. And urban sprawl just proliferated. And, and it didn't solve the problem at all. It just spread the problem out, made everybody's traffic worse. So they changed the law and said, look, if there's a deficiency that we're causing, we have to contribute our proportional fair share of whatever the fix would be. If that's a turn lane and we're fifteen percent of the traffic, it's a million dollar turn lane, we have to do a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We pay it to the agency. In this case, it'd be mostly the state. Um, and then when there's enough money, they make the improvement. Or what usually happens is they negotiate with you and say, look, you have to pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But if you do this light timing study or something else, that'll help. And because we don't know that wherever we're going to get the million dollars for the actual improvement. So that's how it evolved. But the state has preempted local governments from denying projects based on traffic. If you either, if there's no mitigation required, as in this case, because it's less than two percent, that's considered a minima. Uh, or if mitigation is required, if we offer to pay our share of that, then local governments can't deny them based on traffic. It's frustrating to every local government and tons of citizens. I sit in the highway fifty traffic at times myself, and it's horrible. And we definitely need to do something about it. This project is not a major contributor, and under the current law, there's really not a whole lot that any of us can do about it with this particular little project. Uh, the sidewalks, we talked about, uh, how the, they are five feet within the project so far. I believe that the residential neighborhoods behind this on both sides, their sidewalks are four feet wide, which are a residential, normal sidewalk. Five feet meets ADA commercial standards, so you can push wheelchairs down and, and do that type of thing. Uh, bicycles, I understand, but it, it is technically illegal to ride the bicycle on the sidewalk, even though people do it all the time. Sinage, forty two versus thirty two square feet is, uh, a pretty small. When they were doing four buildings, they might have had less users. With twelve, we need some ability to be able to show where these people are located, especially if it's a doctor's office. My, uh, in-laws live in Kings Ridge, and they actually drive to their doctor when they have a new doctor the day before, so they know where it is and, and how to get into it. And signage is important for that. Parking, it does meet the code. Um, water runoff, that's a very good question. But the St. John's standards, and there's already a St. John's permit for this, and they've already built an overall pond that will handle racetrack, the other commercial on fifty, and our project. And it is against the law and our permit to increase offsite runoff at all. And a, as I would note, uh, John's Cove has a, a wall that will prevent any kind of runoff that's going. But when we redesign the site, it all has to drain into the pond. And I'm not an engineer. I don't want to, those details will come back to us on construction plans when the actual engineer can stand up here and, and talk about it. Um, and as far as just the overall growth issue and the lifestyle changing in the neighborhood, I, I have sympathy for that. It's happened in my neighborhood and all neighborhoods almost around here. This has been commercially zoned for fifteen years at least. And, um, yeah, before the crash, so oh four or oh five is, is when it was done it the first time. And it, we feel like this project here with these smaller buildings, thirty five foot buffer, by the way, on the buffer next to the residential wall, we're not removing any of the trees that are in there. All the protected trees in that, in that buffer are staying. Um, that'll help the visual, uh, with the folks in trying to enjoy their backyard and, and do that. And it's a six-foot wall. And then when we have one-story buildings, there won't be any visual line into the residential neighborhood. I think that covers most of the, of the issues. If you guys have any questions, or if I missed anything, which certainly does happen, uh, please let me know. And we would ask for your support. It's, uh, we feel like a better redesigned project uh, than the one that's out there. The two-story buildings up against the, the buffer are a terrible idea. And we recognize that and try to redesign the site to be, um, more consistent with the community standards in the air. With that, we have to try to answer questions. We do have the whole development team from JW Square here, so if I can't answer it, they will. And I, I did get an answer to the, we have no plans right now to restrict individual rentals in buildings. So if somebody wanted to rent an office in a building and the owner of that building said, yeah, you can, you're an insurance agent, you can rent that office or whatever, we don't have any plans to restrict that at this point. We, we've, in all of our other projects, we see very little of that, but it does happen every now and but there's still overall restriction on what you can enter. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, you couldn't rent to a small shop or a dance studio or, or anything like that. Has to be a professional office.
Where, where would that come up at? Like in, like if, if one of them purchased it, because obviously the seller is not going to be the one to monitor it. Would that be at permit stage, where licensing?
Yeah, they'd have to get a business license.
That's where that would be prevented at that point, right?
Yeah, but I don't, uh, again, I don't want to misstate anything, leave any, any, anything unclear. I think the town allows that. And I, as, as long as they meet the normal requirements, they'd be able to rent an office in one of these buildings.
And also, most likely, a require building permit, like a build-out permit, which can come through Sarah and I. And that's where we would check that.
That's where you would stop, yes, where, where it would be.
And I, I have a question that I think that you kind of touched on, but I just want to make sure I fully understand. Going back to, so the current plan for the thirty thousand square feet is actually a footprint of those buildings, right? So if it's two-story building, it would actually be sixty thousand square feet?
No, that's, that's not true. It is thirty thousand max. So there's four buildings of almost eight thousand. They look, uh, identical. So there are eight thousand square foot commercial, two-story. That's right.
Okay, so make sure, just make sure that the density of them more than the thirty thousand square.
And along that same lines, does it matter where the four buildings go on the site? Or like if they had two buildings back against here, if it was kind of flipped, would that still meet where?
The way that PD was approved, they would have to meet that building arrangement.
This exact building arrangement, okay, yeah, yeah.
And then the other thing too, is, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say that any substantial change has to come back through.
I have two other questions. The other one is, so basically you, you referenced Tucker Oaks. So is that a Schmidt, JW?
It is.
Okay, so that would be if we were looking at to see something that would be similar. This seems like it's a little more density than Tucker Oaks.
Uh, there, there's a better example, and it's in Claremont. Uh, they built, uh, it's very nice, like, very nice.
Yeah.
Still very well-entained. They've been in that hole for five, six hours.
And I would say Winter Garden standards, I'm not going to, I hope they're not listening, but are not as strict as Oakland standards. For example, the twelve-foot buffer up against residential rather than the thirty. So this will look different. It has more open space. It has more tree protection than, than the Tucker Oaks.
And then my last question, sorry, is, so the sidewalks that we're talking about are really within the development itself, not perimeter. If there's, because my, one suggestion I was thinking is, because I think that's buffer all around the back of the buildings. But if it was sidewalks, I could see where there could be a point of making the sidewalks around the area larger than the ones within the actual development. Um, just because like, like, for example, my neighborhood that I live in, we actually have a section of the trail that runs through my neighborhood that was Oakland required it. But, so that's what I'm saying, like this, so I can see where the five-foot sidewalks within the access to the buildings is one conversation. But again, I don't think there's sidewalks that are around the outside.
I'm going to have to ask, there is a sidewalk already on Remington Road. Is that correct?
So that's already here between. Okay, okay.
But the railroad, there's no sidewalks.
Yeah, just show everybody this.
Rattle no better than.
Yeah, so on Southern Railway, to the west of this project, and most of the research upon this, there is an existing sidewalk on the south side of Southern Railway that their sidewalk would be back to. And that existing sidewalk that's there is five feet.
Okay.
There's one on the north side of Southern Railway on the back.
Just have one conversation. I'm fine, I got it.
On the backside of racetrack is five feet and the existing sidewalk on Remington Road is five feet. So this would just, if it were, this would be six. You'd have a little section of six feet just on that one. Not connecting to any other six-foot sidewalk.
I have a question. Ask me. The property adjacent to John's Landing, under construction now, with construction going in. How, how can we, or can we be sure that if this does pass, whatever passes,
Right.
that this is begun until that is a certain percentage complete? To avoid
Yeah.
major.
I, I don't think you can. I do think that this is a nine-month process, if it goes fast, to get to a site permit stage and probably twelve to eighteen. Uh, and that's if they just hit it and say, here's our plans, let's go. I'm not sure about the other. I'm not sure about the other property.
I mean, well, so I I don't know how far they are are along the plants. No, no, what I'm saying is for this specific project, it doesn't look, I mean, how far are you guys along the plants?
It's not engineered.
Okay, yeah, it's a long way off from action. Down not only two years, but I mean, if if they're supporting at this point, it would be pretty much.
Well, I mean, the developers here, what's your timing, what's your schedule, you you probably said. To start construction and what's your construction period? So your best case, your Q three of next year, you start and then what's your build time? About a year, so you're Q three of twenty-six before this opens.
As you're talking about, which for the record that.
At best case.
JW Square.
And one more question, the entry, please explain, there's an entryway down Remington.
No.
Is there gonna be, and 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 there's an entryway?
No.
There's no entry on Remington.
Just through up Southern Railway.
There's no entry on Remington.
The only way to get.
There's two.
Would be facilities off of fifty.
No, off of the street, away, they're calling Southern Railway.
From what about the cycle, the thieves took off the rail thing, where the ditch is right here by, I'm right back. It's it's a deep ditch and the thieves cut the aluminum off of it and anybody taller than fifteen, off the cycle. Should be ready, there there was one, but the thieves took it fifteen years ago and there've been.
I think that's on racetrack, what do you think?
But it's still a lot that we're gonna build, okay.
Well, then it'll be part of our construction to to.
I just submit your technique again, yeah.
We assume it's our property, we don't want it.
So I'm just thinking like, are we gonna have another opportunity to look at this site layout again? And make comments on it specifically to address dumpster enclosure heights. Look at landscape plans to make sure that that's.
It'll come back to you on the building review, um. So it wouldn't come back to necessarily for site.
It's not gonna come to us, it's.
Actually, the review comes through you as well, it goes through apparent, parent review board to you all and the town commission. But that review is based on building structure. Um, because the other part is with this PD, we have like for the landscaping and all that. We have the approved landscaping plan under the PD, which quite honestly is different to what's under your land development code today. But that's what they have to follow is that approved landscape plan in the PD. That was approved back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen there. So this is the time now, if you would have concerns about the location of the dumpster or any other things, make that as part of your recommendation.
So I was gonna say, in in previous meetings, before I was on the committee. There could be recommendations that, we understand that there may not be any requirement by the town of where the dumpsters go. But I think that from what we're hearing from the residents, we would like there to be a different solution for the dumpsters. If anyone else on the committee has anything to chime in, but that's, that's what I think that that we're seeing is, I know, I know personally, I would like to see. You know, some of these things that have been brought up, revisited through this plan before we approved it to. To maybe revisit where the dumpsters are going.
There's a couple of factors though with the dumpsters that we all need to consider is how in the world are you gonna get a dumpster truck to do a, to back in and turn?
Yeah.
So it's gotta be a straight shot in, which is where they have it currently on their plan. The issue is, is that it would require a complete configuration of this indoor and playing showing. In order to accommodate that, so that's one thing we need to keep in mind, um while we're talking about dumpster locations. I think a lot of it can be mitigated by height, um.
That's what I was thinking was the height of, I think that there's one comment that the racetrack height is blocks them and.
Yes.
So we can do something to match that.
Correct.
And try to.
But to the resident's points of the beeping at the backing up of the truck at whatever time of the hours that's gonna be done, a wall isn't gonna help that.
You're gonna hear it anywhere, anywhere on this site.
You can hear racetrack, you can hear that.
That's true.
And as to the height of the wall and the enclosure for the dumpster, we believe the town code requires it to be completely. Enclosed, to be invisible, and if you guys have a concern with that and it's not the case, I don't mind writing it in the, in the PD. Cause that certainly is our intent.
And I will confirm, he is correct, in your code, the dumpster enclosure has to completely cover the dumpster. The dumpster cannot be higher than the wall of the dumpster.
So when they're driving truck down, so they're going towards our house, the dumpster, right? With their lights on and everything, with their little draw things going out, they're opening up the gate or what, hopefully it's a locked gate anyway. And they flip it up, more noise, yes, in their life. If you pointed out, if I did your racetrack, it would probably just fly out, whoa, and then break it down. Then I got lights back, out of the state back out, we hear the beeping once. Probably a better solution, it's not to be a better.
It it may, it would require, based upon this current configuration, it would require a completely different layout for the buildings.
They'd have to move the whole.
Yeah, I I get that, we don't like it, uh but it's a nature of the beast and they've gotta go somewhere. I don't think you're ever gonna mitigate the noise, the disruption, the property was zoned for this kind of development. And eventually something's gonna go in there and I hate it, but. There's nothing we can do about it.
Yep, we, we are trying, give me just a second, I'm sorry, we'll, we're trying our best. And we've come up with two potential ideas and one is additional landscaping in the thirty-five feet. Over and above what's already required, we don't mind that and we think it it can have a noise blocking and absorption idea. Then the other one, and we're gonna have to look at this, the only other spot to put a dumpster that works is at the end of this row. Which butts up against a stormwater pond.
Correct.
It's still pretty close to the neighbors, but it's further away.
It won't get headlights directly in.
Well, that's right, we could. Yeah, it will be, we'll get, that's.
To me, that's more disruptive, uh backup.
But we just wanna try to look at whatever we can to.
I I think if you landscape it more and you got the taller walls, the lighting will get blocked down. Cause that that, the the beeping doesn't matter where you want the site on for you. So we can mitigate, help mitigate the lighting, I mean, look at, they pulled it off of that wall.
Yeah.
In this plan, they would be right up against it.
Yes.
They'd be two-story buildings, like you said, looking into the pool.
So if your recommendation is with additional landscaping. Um, in in the dumpster areas to try to buffer those better, we can work on details of that before the council meeting and and we'd be fine with that.
Okay.
And what buildings are moving into the park, is the back. I'm saying, I'm saying the four buildings are not looking into anyone's park, the back.
Well, the building is, the one building is right up against the wall.
Thank you.
Well, the back of the building, there's no back of the building, there's, it's, you know, the windows all the way around.
We don't know what these were looking.
It's not gonna be a back of a building.
No, they're not. What I'm saying is that many times you find a building, there are no windows in the back, like these buildings. I don't believe they have windows in the back, just like the buildings over there do not have windows in the back, they back from building, so. So with regards to that. That's what they feel, doesn't they, right, so they're relying, right, you have things blocked and then you do what's right. It's just a new variant, we're through every day, they block and they, they people have an issue, then the, right? When people are coming together and trying to, you know, get some resolution going, we're just talking about leaving neighbors, right? You made this plan, so to say that, well, this plan and this is how the plan is, well, no, the plan was for building and you made this. So if you made this plan, then you can make an alteration to your plan that is right now, your only sliding record. For what, footprint, what you're asking for is additional, doesn't go out for one hundred and eighty-four. And that doesn't have to be approved and you can't talk about it because that's some restriction or interference with regards to the thing you are being. And it appears to me like a baby switch, right? So what you do is you sit at the bargaining table and you say, the other board that was here, assuming it was. When they got this approved, saying, oh, we want this, we want this, we want four buildings, we don't wanna hold a lot. And they go to proof and so the person said, hint, hint, nudge, nudge, we take what we can get today and we come back later. And we ask the thing question, right, tell me what you want for modification, which is what is happening now. But just like you're saying, other people will be buying, they'll, they'll do the same thing, right? So they come and they can ask the modification and to us and the board, it's like baby switch. Because we know that, yeah, the people at the table said, this is much as we can do, hint, hint, nudge, nudge, we'll just come back later and ask for money. So we're just asking for our commercial neighbors to just be good neighbors. With regards to what we're indicating our issues are concerning the dumpsters, to me, that's an easy one. If you don't have the three buildings that's suggested, you don't need the parking, you don't need the dumpsters there. Because if you see all the parking of the other example is in the middle, just saying, we're just asking to be good neighbors.
Well, then you can sort of inside, I wanna say with about the town building design requirements. They would not allow a bland fall on the back of an office building, it does require windows around the building. So there there would be, if that was built that way, there would be windows on the back, part of the town.
And.
But they're one-story.
No, they're.
Under this.
Oh, two-story, yeah. And it was very eloquently said, and we are trying to be good neighbors, is 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 why we're here, trying to offer what we can. We can't do everything and and if this is not, then the thirty thousand square foot's gonna get built. Pretty much in the same shape it was, because everybody's gonna be wary of trying to come in here and change something. Um, so this is our chance to do it right, it's not a baby switch, we were not involved in the original approvals at all. We are a latecomer to this, so this is our first ask. And we think it's a better fit for this piece of property in the community than what's already approved and.
Four tenants of what we're approving tonight.
It is the uh the changes that Brad outlined on.
These.
Yes, and that's, I don't know exactly what page, yes.
The color.
Those are the real substantive.
You tore the page out like me.
So the first amendment was two thousand nineteen.
So what is, so what you're being asked to make a renovation on are those five changes? The plan development, which would allow for this project to move forward as proposed this evening. Um, but you can, you know, add a condition to that if you want to, as they have been offered, additional landscaping. Or anything else that you as a board would want to recommend, um but that's what you're, you're putting a renovation on, so. Get the closing of the comments.
Or me in our section.
Yeah, it's, it's at the table. Yes, yep.
Good man. The location.
Um, okay, yeah. My, I I if we go through these, I I I think, you know, taking it, and I appreciate the public's comments and I would be, if. If this was my neighborhood and going up behind my wall, my backyard, I'd be out here fighting too. So I can appreciate that, but it is always been zoned for, it's, and the risk of buying. When you have vacant land right behind you is that these kind of meetings happen. It's, when you look at the thirty thousand square feet to the thirty-seven thousand square feet. You know, they take one building out at the front, it doesn't help the neighborhood at all. So I think it's a, you know, the additional square footage is uh. Is in the grand scheme of things is inconsequential in it, I don't think it's gonna make a big difference in the parking and definitely not a difference in the, in the, in the traffic. Uh, I think going to the one-story buildings, pulling them farther away than what the original four were. I think is a huge difference in the, in the viability of what goes on this property. And the alternative is, we do get stuck with four, four buildings with a building and a half right up against the neighborhood, looking in on the people. And people will come in to fight that and there's nothing we can do about it, so this is our chance to do the best and. I think if they would've came with a plan that put all these buildings up against that wall, we would've asked them to do exactly what they're doing right now. And push that out as far as, as they have, I like the idea of shielding the dumpsters. You're not gonna make the noise go away, unfortunately, the beeping is gonna be there, so the 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 best we can do with landscaping and that. I can sympathize with the sidewalks on the roads, so if there's any way we can put a condition that on Southern Railway. And even if on Remington it gets rebuilt to be six feet, I don't think six, six-foot walkways within the development make any difference. Public, so uh I think if, if we look at the sidewalks on the two streets. And then I do have an issue with the signage, I think in this day and age, nobody looks at signs, to be honest with you, especially as small as these are gonna be. Um, I think they could fit it in, people use Google Maps, their navigation in the, in the car. Uh, they know where they're going, so I don't, I I do have an issue.
Maximum eight-foot height, right, just wider, not higher, yeah.
I think, you know, that's about thirty percent, thirty-five percent increase in size, I don't think that's. I I think that's something that can definitely come down, it'll help on that corner and in the, in the views. And I think they can accomplish what they, what they still need, so uh I've seen what the developer's done, I think we're gonna see it down the road. He does nice stuff and I think he's worked with, I I think to the point of being a good neighbor. I think they have by giving that space and that, and as much as we may not like it. This is, this is what this property is zoned for and this is the best fit for what you're gonna get there.
I mean, are the requirements for ADA handicap parking with these twelve buildings, what would be the requirement for each building?
Well, it's one for twenty-five spaces is what they need requirement and that was actually a problem that the town engineer had was. One of the buildings didn't have a space there, which they they added the spaces there, so they do need ADA requirements for the building as they show it.
They have to have one for every building, at least for a new.
Yep.
I I mean, personally, I think the single-story aesthetic is more in keeping with our town than having a bunch of, what would look like big office buildings. So I, I. So every, every, every building, all twelve buildings will have to have at least one.
I'm not, I I don't wanna give you a definitive on that, cause that's actually enforced by the building official about ADA parking and that's not.
They're gonna make sure that that all the.
Okay, well, this takes me back to that Ford Street project you talked about and the parking being comparable to what the building's gonna be. And there being a good balance and that was a nightmare.
Well, they actually, in this, this situation, get the actual numbers down over there. They are providing more parking than that's what required based on their thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four square feet.
Okay.
Um, they're required, get my notes, exactly. And it is, so they're, based on their vote, they're not, it's like this. They're required to have one hundred and eighty-six parking spaces and they're actually providing one hundred and ninety-five. So they are providing sufficient parking that's with your code.
Which is the double-edged sword of, it's more than what's required, but then I, we also heard, where's the overflow going? So they aren't providing, it's, it's a tough balance, right?
These medical buildings don't wanna have ADA because there may be people that have the need to get into those.
They may end up putting more, you know, you're gonna have to have a minimum amount.
Yeah.
So we have a lot of states, people who work in the construction industry is that these plans. You know, Schmidt or whoever it is is gonna ascertain this client that wants to build this building and. All of that needs to rest, that's right, so what's the use? Can we get to see the use, uh, the building department's gonna weigh in heavy on, on ADA access, they're gonna make sure there's. You know, a wide enough entrance, they're gonna make sure there's. you know, a wide enough entrance. They're going to make sure there's enough egress out of the building. So all of that gets handled there. I think our biggest focus is, what do we want? If we were to approve this, what do we want out of this to help mitigate the impact to town and to
And just to clarify, I just counted, we have 11 handicap spaces, one per building, each building. And under the ADA code, we would be required to have eight, if you divide 25 by or two.
I just
Ninety, so, yeah, yeah, we got, no, it's, it, it's very hard to either rent or sell a building if there isn't an ADA or handicap parking space close, so.
Had to hear it.
Sure.
Any comments?
No, I'm, I mean. Ready for a motion then?
Yeah.
Commend for you the motion that, um, if the motion is going to be approved with any recommendations, that those recommendations get laid out in the motions.
Okay.
We can bring that to the commission.
I would just go one by one then through it?
Sure, yes.
So I'll make a mo- Uh, I will make a motion to approve the increase in building size to 37,184. To, um, the revised plan as outlined with the 12 smaller buildings to eliminate the landscape buffer, to keep the sidewalks at six feet wide on Remington on Southern Railway, which is different than what's in here, and to deny the additional square footage for the signage to keep it at 32 square feet.
The, well, any, we also include the
Oh, and
dumpster, it's possible.
It's, we're going to get another look at that, right?
That's, yeah.
Uh, we'll, we'll add the additional landscape buffer and code required or town required height. Um, we can ask the developer to look at it, but, I mean, I think if you move, I, I think it's going to be a bigger issue. But that's just my professional opinion from doing development for 25 years.
It's an older backup beat.
Exactly. I think, I think the straight shot in is the best case, quite honestly. But I do like the idea of the trees. You added, you added trees and the town required height.
So just for clarity, because I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of what they're voting on. Your motion included the enhanced landscaping, the height around the dumpsters and did or did not include relocating the
I, I don't believe
Did not include.
Did not include relocation.
Just for the record, so that we're, we're clear.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed and backed. All right.
And if, what were the numbers and sorry, that would that we include, there was a name, right?
There was no name.
There was no names? Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Next piece of business, would you even nominate a vice chairman? There's nothing.
Great motion.
We have one, one nomination. Michael, is anybody else have a nomination for vice chairmen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a second on that then.
All in favor?
Hey Brad, do you have any development updates next couple of months, what they look like?
We have a lot of, um, yes, uh, so we've had a couple of pre-application meetings. We have a couple coming up. The one thing we are scheduling right now for the hearings is for the architectural review, the grant review for the Harvest District, Franco Scalia's multi, um, used project there on 50.
That was supposed to, uh, this meeting, but they weren't ready, right?
Yeah, they were hoping to, yeah.
Is this part of the Grove? Is it?
No, this is the commercial piece, the mixed-use.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah.
The next to tractor supply, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So without, that'll go to appearance review board.
Those babies.
Or the first meeting in November, come here in November and town commission in December for the architectural review. And what he's submitted is exactly what you all saw before, when this came through, so it should be okay.
At least, we do need to bring the cross, because it's not the developer to do from over the 711.
No, I, I made a note, so.
For instance. It's, but do that, that's, that is a safety hazard, so.
The other one, we did have a pre-application on the Bin Laden property. Um, that will be coming back. It's a project, um, it's 200, I think it was 286 multifamily units, 202, 300 multifamily units, 110-unit hotel and 11,000-square-foot retail out parcel. It also includes a small annexation. We have, yeah. So once they submit their full plans, we'll start scheduling that, putting the notices out for that, yeah. The same way about that one.
Be a good time.
Uh, so
And says for it's after our car. We did.
We have a meeting that we have to reschedule because you had to cancel.
Same, 2025.
For the, um, property adjacent to tractor supply, the out parcel in front and the vacant pieces there. That's, um, going to come in as a, basically a commercial center is what that will come in as.
Is that the old, is that the, the hotel or do they tear that down or no?
No, other side.
This is on
Right front tractors.
That'll probably be coming later this year, um.
Is 4th and 50 coming back?
Uh, 4th and 50 is not coming back yet. They're still working through their, I don't know what they're doing. They're not coming back yet. Um, um, we're talking a lot with the Brierley development happening out there. We have a couple of building permits. I think we have two or three in that 1A, that replat part. Um, so some houses will start getting built there. Um, in the Grove, they've got, I think, Sarah, two permits in the Grove, I think, for houses in the Grove.
One's going up.
One's going up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So they got houses.
It's a big house. Yeah.
It's a big house.
It is.
Yeah, it's a model.
Yeah, that's why it was kind of bigger and they were wondering if they were doing one.
I think they're going to move their office.
Their office across, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a massive house.
I don't know how they can do 44 of those in 19 acres. That's a pretty big house. I, um, yeah, uh, hold on, he's not done yet.
So, so one more update that we don't have any official on, but they will be holding a neighborhood meeting here at the corner of Tub and Oakland on the southwest corner. And this is again Franco and Steve Healy. Um, what they're proposing is a mixed-use project there. However, it's too dense. It, it would require the land use, it's only, that applies to state law 50. They would need the 25 dwelling units per acre for what they're proposing. Um, so what they're going to have to do is go through a comprehensive plan amendment to change that to be able to do what they want to do. Uh, one of the requirements of your code is the town can require a developer to go to, to do a public meeting on their own to get preliminary input from residents. So they've been working with Elise and I to get that set up. However, that's not a meeting that the town holds. Um, we, somebody will be there just so we can hear what's being said. But it's not one that we notice or that the one that we're holding. Um, it's one that they do on their own, so that will probably be happening soon.
Yeah.
Is there a way to notice it though?
We're gonna, we're gonna do a PSA. We're gonna do a PSA. I talked to Jessica about that. We'll just do a, just a quick notice to, sorry. Yes, while we're on the topic, I would advise that if more than one of you attend that town hall meeting, since it's not a publicly noticed, right? Remember sunshine law, you need
Yes.
Right? Okay, so I would say if more than one attend, then just don't clump and, and neither of you should, should interact with the developer or, you know, don't speak essentially. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry to be so
No, 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 I appreciate it, yeah.
That community meeting will be October 29th, six to seven of, yeah. Which is the Brierley.
Sorry, what time?
Six to seven.
So that, yeah, so that, we'll see that maybe coming forward, uh, that one. I think those are all the major things that we have for, oh.
Uh, Bayview, the five, there, P E.
Yeah, so, um, Bayview, John's Landing, the project we were about today. Actually, I'll give you another, well, it probably may be a way, a lot of the residents down there were really upset because they put in all this excess fill. And so, uh, uh, we were mostly with Public Works and with CPH. And we finally convinced them that it was completely wrong what they did because they were saying, oh, no, it's okay. Um, so they're, I don't know if they finished. I haven't been out there in the last couple of weeks. Um, but they're, they understand they have to remove all that extra fill. It wasn't done properly. And we got the water management district involved as well. Because there's no way there's, their stormwater system would have worked with all that fill they put in there. It just
No, that, it was all clay, so.
Yeah.
A lot of that clay, you say, private, it's crazy. Um, we told them to take the material out and then we got a call that they were bringing more material in, which was a lot of clay. When we went out there, they were using that clay to do a roadbed for the dump trucks to get back there and pull the material out.
Yeah, sounds like a lot of money.
Yeah, but, but the other one that Sarah's saying, so what's, what will be coming to you, because we have a pre-application with them, we're in the schedule. Um, they are selling it to Dream Builders.
Dream Finders.
They're, they have a contract to purchase it. Dream Finder is going to come in like we just did with the Grove and Brierley with the PD amendment, zone at PD. Have their own design standards for that project. Um, so they have submitted an application for the pre-application. Wow, so that will be coming to you all as well.
Where do you come from, Seth?
This is at the end of Remington Road. It's the 20 lots at the end of Remington.
I'm just, they're, they're, they're going to be narrow, like for
Yeah, well, yeah, because what they were approved, I think those lots are 80. Uh, but, but they're, they're 70. There was some discussion that they might be combining some of those lots.
It's good.
But I, what they submitted to us right now, it doesn't show that. Um, I do know one of their proposals is also is to potentially gated, have it become a gated community. Um, I'm, I'm curious to see what they are going to submit for their designs. See, so, but that, we have a pre-app with them. We don't have a schedule yet, but we're in the process. So I think, you know, those are all the major things we have in process that will be coming to you on the next couple. Any questions for me?
Thank you. You're doing such a good job. Thank you. I think at least you could have used your help pulling
Do we officially adjourn the meeting?
Yes, we can officially adjourn.
We're officially adjourned.
No gavel?